All the meeting notes are at 6:30. Chuck is not here. Do you want to volunteer to take notes? I can take notes and put them together as we go, but there's another volunteer I'm hoping to do it.
Well, I always take notes anyway, so...
We combine to make sure we're on the right page.
So, yeah. So maybe we could accept this coming, we could just somehow combine our notes.
Send him out his minutes. Any changes to the agenda?
I would suggest that since Chuck isn't here, they rearrange some of these things up in the top part here, the Turner Hill.
Okay, well, the Turner Hill is there, but it doesn't still... The representatives are here, so probably don't move that one.
They called today, but I built in filming and asked what they had to say.
Because they were on the agenda that we're planning on coming. Somebody from Wyndham Foundation, somebody from the state.
Right, and they called and I showed Bill the agenda, but I also showed your email that said that it's about a hearing. I don't know if the outcome was...
As I understand it, and as many veterans can fill in, you don't start with a hearing, they come to a meeting and we put it on the agenda, we discuss it, and then we go to hearing after.
Yeah, a hearing has to be one as such.
Right, oh, there's Chuck now, so he can get some perspective. Good morning! Motion to adjourn. Alright.
Hi Chuck.
Your little car have trouble getting up the hill?
Yeah, 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 it's all slate, it's all slate.
Not a problem whatsoever.
Goes. Recording.
We're about to approve the agenda, the issue was brought up, they wanted me to rearrange because you were not here, but since you are here, we'll leave it as it is.
That's alright. That's alright with me.
Alright, and we're gonna move to public comment? Any comments? Being none, we'll move on. Uh, Chuck, any word from Wyndham Foundation and do we even forward that or can we postpone this?
Well, we had officials, I'm gonna pass out a plan that we can review tonight. Um, as you know, the first meeting is very informal. We're just here to give an overview, look at, you know, look at what the plan says. I've got a few extra copies you can share. Um, this is not a subdivision in the classic sense. This is just sort of a legal exercise. Um, the folks that are doing this, they came from Montpelier. Um, no big deal, you know, we canceled the meeting and I told them that I could probably handle this after having talked with them. We were originally on the agenda for last time. And so I promised that I would cover them this portion, understanding that they'll definitely be there at the hearing.
Our plan is to have the hearing on September 11th meeting?
Yes, if it is your pleasure to have that. Um, all the stuff has been prepared and ready for that. But if we look at this overview and then look at the lots, it's essentially taking the homestead which is part of that conservation land and bringing it over to the Wyndham Foundation. When it goes over to the foundation, there's gonna be all sorts of stipulations, so... But basically, it's an act of preservation. I can tell you for certain, there's no new development that's gonna be associated with this.
So who owns Turner Hill now as a state property? Okay, it's not a private foundation, it's a state-owned land.
But the five acres would, um, I don't know if it... It may not even have to decide, it could remain state-owned, the five acres. And they could simply do like the hundred-year lease agreement that you see other groups do, their own public plans and turn it over for conservation purposes. Maybe something like that, or it may go over. That's kind of immaterial to the planning commissioners. The big thing is to look at, you know, this subdivision land, make sure, you know, it's accurate and get us ready for the public hearing, which is to tell me if this is a minor or major. This one is clearly a minor, but that is the prerogative of commissioners.
Anything else you want to add before opening up for questions from the commissioners? Can we look it over and questions be cleared up?
So, so what is happening?
Yeah, good question.
But can you back up a little bit? What is happening here? These are exercises in order to do...
Yeah, your parent parcel stays the same, you've just taken that five acres, that homestead, and making it its own little lot.
You're making it what, sorry?
Its own little lot. Legally, it'll be a separate lot from the parent lot.
What's the original acreage of that lot?
It's quite extensive and it traversed, so the mainland here...
Fifty-eight.
Sixty-eight, yes, sixty-eight. But that water area tips into Athens.
Larger portion is down in Athens.
That's right.
And what is the purpose of this?
It's basically that homestead for preservation's sake.
Yeah, you can see the building on this...
That's, and that becomes a legal exercise if you're turning it over to a conservation group or it... There is, um, legal reasons why you'd want to do something like that.
They want to give some improvements in that one corner as a visitor center potentially, or you can't tell obviously?
Yeah, you know, my knee-jerk reaction, I haven't seen this happen a lot of times. Anything that the state does takes forever, but if you can spin it off to a foundation, you're much more nimble, you're much more adaptive. If you can break, you can still keep it in state ownership, you could do whatever you want, but it's a way to kind of convey rights to a nonprofit. So this is strictly a legal exercise, there's really no reason to do it from a subdivision perspective.
One of five acres?
That was just the, unless in general, we see anything from two to five acres on a homestead. That's just kind of an arbitrary number that they...
And can that, can this five acres be subdivided again?
Then would it require additional review by you all? Yeah, we would probably say, yeah, and thank you, no further subdivision. It's part of our decision.
Would the state say that anyways, probably? Because it's a conservation investment.
There's not much that you can support out that way for development. So it would make sense that maybe commissioners say, no further subdivision after this, the five acre lot is...
Is that an easement already from the state that you can't further subdivide them?
That's more than likely something they pass down, but it doesn't hurt for us to put in our decision. It's not that you need to.
Also, the tower doesn't plow up that far, do we need to put anything in there for that, that we will not support them?
How far up do they plow? They don't plow all the way to us?
They don't plow all the way up because it's so steep.
It's real steep.
And nobody's up there.
Just in the last house.
And according to the Wyndham Foundation, last time I talked to them, they said they have no intent on having it plowed because they're just gonna, they have a grant already that they're applying for to, um, to help preserve that, but it's not gonna be like a building, building, but they're gonna just kind of restore it.
As a historic site.
As a historic site, and it kind of plays a part with everything else they got going on down in the village. But do we have to put anything in there that wording that we're not going to? Because we don't have...
This subdivision in no way incurs the public, you know, necessities of public service.
Add to the...
Yeah, that's right. And that's clearly, to your comment, that's like right up the planning commission's alley. You're not trying to, you're trying to protect public asset, public services and not structures to that.
Well, it's just, that road would have to be upgraded before you kind of would be willing to even...
It used, well, it used to be plowed years ago, but nobody ever wanted that route because it's so dangerous.
It's so steep, all the runoff is turned into rock and it's kind of nasty.
Well, what about if you summer maintenance of that road?
Summer they do. So they do.
Grading or something.
Are there any culverts or anything like that?
I imagine there is, because I think it's a regular, it's a regular road, other than no one's up there, so they kind of just made it.
I have a question. So they're restoring that building? Like what they do now is they go to that last house and they actually plow and there's this big giant mountain that sits there all winter, so there's no access. So my question would be, if there is a restoration up there, um, would there need to be access to somebody to get up there, should there be a fire or something? Because there is no access in the winter, the way they're doing it right now.
They're making supposedly another access to get to that, I had heard, in the very beginning of this? Yeah, they are supposed to try to go in...
Buy it at the foundation.
Yeah, and I think I bore...
Be different.
A different way in.
A different way in.
I'm not sure, I didn't follow it.
This would be off from the top up here, Turner Hill Road, but right now, there's a sort of an unimproved path that goes up through there.
But I thought they were gonna try and improve that.
It's over the stone course over there. Yeah, I think that's in the works, but not, not an alternative to Turner Hill.
No, not an alternative. No, but the restoring's no different than what it is right now. They just don't want it falling in.
Yeah, I just wondered if somebody was actually, you know, if they're gonna restore it, would they want access to it?
They said they did.
Should something happen? Because you can't, it's not like it's not even plowed, it's like it's actually a different mountain.
They just put a snow pile there.
Yeah, they just put a snow pile right there and it gets to be like eight feet tall.
But I know Wyndham, Wyndham agreed that, no, they didn't want any access to have to go up there. They're not restoring it like they're gonna use the building. They just don't want it to topple in.
I just figured they didn't want it to...
But it is something to address because you don't plow it.
I guess all of my curiosity and questions goes things like, what are the rules when you subdivide a wildlife management area? But the state already owns this piece, so the questions will be answered and I assume they're not gonna break their own laws in doing that kind of thing. You know, if this is a private property, I would think there'd be all sorts of Act 250s and stuff stepping in saying, you know, don't subdivide anything of that nature, but it's all state-owned land, so it's...
What I like about this meeting though is we're getting issues raised that they can present in testimony for the hearing.
And we would expect that...
Yeah, there's utility to having this conversation now because we're prepping that. So access issues, any change in traffic, seasonal access, you know, so they can provide testimony to that effect.
Even on state land now, it will become Wyndham Foundation land.
Not at the subdivision, but then they have the right to sell it to them after it's subdivided.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
But what does it mean for wildlife? Because right now, this is a wildlife refuge, right?
That's kind of where we're gonna explain.
And so what does that mean for that five acres?
Does it stay part of the same protection?
Right. I have a funny feeling that's all gonna probably be written in the whole easement and the deed over.
But we can ask.
Yeah, these are big boys playing with big lawyers.
Yeah, future sale could be anything.
Once it's subdivided.
Yeah, once we subdivide, we have now control of that.
Right. Along those lines, and again, I'm curious about the rules. If the state decides to sell that entire sixty-acre parcel?
Right.
Is there anything protecting them, the property from doing that, they couldn't?
After indeed. If it's not under some kind of a conservation easement, I guess...
Right.
Not that they're planning to get...
Do we know if there's an easement on the rest of it?
Under our conservation. You can rename it or just when they got it from Balco, because Balco turned it over to them.
So it'd be helpful to find out what easements are on there already and what restrictions are on there.
Maybe it's property transfers.
Yes, this is great. Now you, I mean, obviously, say it though, the conveyance said you cannot subdivide it any further. That does not prohibit us from offering them a subdivision permit, they're just gonna be in violation of their own conveyance. So we were not held to that.
That's not our reach, that's the...
That's right, yeah. But some of these questions you're asking about access and conservation, these are clearly the domain of the planning commission.
Other questions, other observations?
So this, this was initiated by the foundation?
By the state and, um, because they know they have this historic asset that needs to be preserved.
Yeah, I think the Wyndham Foundation working with the state because of the whole Turner... Daisy Turner project.
My assumption is nothing nefarious going on here, it's just the process they need to go through to make this happen the way they want it to.
So we consider further development, they need to approve the access road, they'd be responsible for approving the access road?
If they provide testimony that suggests they need year-round access, then one, when the commissioners protect the public trust is by saying, well, if you're gonna subdivide, they need access proof, then...
You know, can't really fire and rescue there.
That's right.
People are going there.
Conversely, if they provide testimony that we don't see the use pattern changing, all we're trying to do is, um, is basically stabilize an historic asset that will continue to operate as is, then you may say, no condition required. May I advertise this as a minor subdivision?
We need a motion.
Yes.
Other questions, comments, observations? Entertaining motion to hold a hearing at the September 11th, we need to review this as a slight, a minor subdivision.
So...
Kim?
Second.
Lisa for a second? Any other questions on Turner Hill and that piece until next time? As promised, I mean, and if there is nothing, we can move on. Wyndham Regional Commission update, Lisa and Eric, anything you want to throw at us tonight?
Should we need a vote?
Oh, we probably should, thank you very much. All in favor of having a hearing at September 11th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we can move on, thank you.
And classifying it as a minor.
And classifying it as minor, that'll all be in the minutes I assume.
Yes.
Eric, do we say anything to the Wyndham Foundation? Wyndham Regional, excuse me, thank you very much. If not, like I say, it's just something I want to make sure that you're there.
Well, what's going on now is the, uh, the beginning of the revision of the regional plan. So every committee of the commission is now looking at aspects of the regional plan and starting to identify areas that might require revision. Not so much yet doing the revision work, but just identifying areas where something needs to be updated or changed. So that's been going on now in both the natural resources committee as well as the energy committee. And that's ongoing for a while.
Anything else? Move on. Correspondence, I have a pile of stuff here, I think everybody's gotten everything, but maybe not. God, I printed something out and I didn't realize it came out in like three-point font, so let me figure out what I got. Uh, the first one is we've been asked if we want to do any kind of write-up with Springfield's Hazard Mitigation Plan. We're not an adjoining town, but we were asked about it anyways?
I didn't quite follow that.
It was a 115-page document and I read through it, but I had no comment. I want to make sure anybody that wants to add anything, it was a very comprehensive document, everything from flood to fire to hurricanes and volcanoes and everything was in there.
Chuck, do you know where we got that?
I do not, and I'm an adjoining town, I have no comment on it. Maybe they just weren't paying attention.
I got it and sent it on, so I don't know what's going on.
I took it as informational, that we want, we can study it and see what they have done in case there's something that we might cover or...
It's incredibly comprehensive.
Yeah.
They got, it's a lot, it's...
But they didn't require any kind of response.
Okay, I think it is informational and it's probably something that Bill sent our way, but I'm just speculating here. Um, because Barrington is going to have to revise our plan and it will be coming up pretty soon.
Uh, just a note, Green Mountain Power, they've had some hearings and we got asked if you wanted to respond and basically Wyndham has responded. Um, they want to know if we want to respond, there was several conditions and basically Wyndham Regional said, we agree with the conditions, one of which was things like, you know, instead of treating a pole, we'd rather use steel, fiberglass or concrete for that area. And a couple of other areas, they did not comment on, and I didn't know that for you, it was mundane, and I want to make sure you're aware of that. Um, Wyndham Foundation Land Use Grant. This, it's the subdivision we did a year ago now, it looks like. We cut out that skinny little driveway in the gravel pit.
On Milltown Road.
Yes, the Milltown Road, thank you. Um, where the gravel pit was kept by the Wyndham Foundation, the rest of the land was sold to the person across. It's gonna be sold once it's done, but I guess it's not. Um, and I forgot why...
Actually, it was transferred over, I believe, already, but it was a violation.
Because of the...
App 250.
And the homestead, this water was there, there's a residence there.
Yeah.
But I don't know if they're transferring, it's on the other side.
It's on the other side, but it, it, the App 250, I guess is all, they didn't go through App 250 and all of the land of the Wyndham Foundation, I guess it's in App 250?
So our subdivision work is done, they're still working and ask if we want to comment? We were comfortable with it before, we're comfortable with it now, we move on, making sure? Okay. Uh, what's the next one? Land use grant, state government municipal days. I don't know if everybody's interested in going, I guess I'm somewhat interested. Did y'all get this? There's a, well, honestly, it looks like a good one in Montpelier and then some not-so-good ones around the state that are pretty limited after that, that first one. The first one's got a lot of options, a lot of stuff, and the other ones are very limited and stuff.
Well, you nailed that, and I'm debating whether or not I can tolerate that drive up, but it's very... Because it's like, oh, there's the good one is in Montpelier.
And I think it starts at, what, 8:30 a.m. in Montpelier, so...
7:30 registration.
So, uh... But the one in Springfield, which is a limited one, is also a...
Springfield or Rutland is what?
There is one in Rutland.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, there's a Rutland all day, but not as comprehensive as Montpelier, and then there's a half-day in Springfield. And that, um, has a section on river corridors and river protection, and that sounds really interesting and relevant. So, um, it costs $10 to go to the Springfield one. Coffee and pastries.
In regards to money, we, I have on the September 11th agenda budget, but last year, if you don't notice what happened is Joe and the crew just took the year before budget and so things like publication of town plan, a variety of other things, there's no money in there now. I'm not rich, but I'm gonna sell out 25 bucks out of my own pocket on this rather than trying to fight this select board to get 25 bucks for this kind of thing. Same with 10 bucks, if you want, I can go to them, but that's where I'm coming from.
They should support it.
Would you like to at least ask them at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Who is thinking of going to any one of these?
I'm thinking of Springfield.
Springfield, 10, 20, 30, I'm not thinking of going on a big one.
I might give on 15.
So under 100 bucks is what I'll ask for, I'll do math. Maybe I'll send an email out to make sure I'm clear, 10 bucks, 10 bucks.
Does anybody remember, was it morning or afternoon, I remember looking at it and couldn't figure out.
The Springfield one?
Yeah, already, yeah.
And what's that again?
October 26th.
And you sent that an email?
Yeah, I forwarded it, yes.
And thank you for doing it in a timely way, that was very helpful.
Alright, so there is that piece and I will follow up on that and I plan to go into, I think it's next board meeting, and I'll talk to them about that and see if I can squeeze them for a nickel or two.
This is so Fox and Martin's up there with me, but not many conference fees. The expectation should be that all commissioners seek at least one opportunity per year for a continuing education so that you can bring those lessons you learned back to the town. Um, I also reimburse mileage, so mileage plus the thing, with the understanding that that's a full day, that you're not at work, you know, you're volunteering, so you're not gonna get paid for your time and so that's your contribution, and then the town does the registration fee and mileage.
I go back to that September 11th meeting and let's put in there 500 bucks for the following fiscal year or a number that we've gotta line out for these kinds of things. I need up 500, I have no...
Also, can we add a follow-up item on the next, uh, meeting after that one to just discuss whatever came up? In case there are lessons learned.
Make sure that the follow-up from any conference we go to is on the following agenda, could be brief.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And I can take care of that. With that one. Lisa sent me this and I don't know if I got forwarded everyone or not. Make it happen, local leadership summit, open to anybody, future Vermont conferences. Again, I think it's 25 dollars, it's a full-day conference, save the date, making it happen. It's up in Castleton. It's not directly planning commission, but I do consider us leaders of the community and this is a leadership workshop. I've been to many of these in my career and about 90% are really bad, but I continue to go. And I'll probably attend this one, if anybody wants to look at that, pass that around and look at it. Any other correspondence, it's what I had on my list. Oh, um, I got this one and I asked Eric, Eric, I love his answer, I guess what it is. Um, this one came to the planning commission chair from Breaker Falls Connection and the letterhead is actually Wyndham Regional Foundation, saying that they are writing a grant to work on, um, you know, a variety of prevention, including alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, et cetera. And they're building a primer and planning for prevention guide and at some point, they're gonna get hold of us because they want to talk to us and I guess substance abuse falls under our title as well?
There's something in the planning room, you know, the town plan about that, so I can see.
That should address the obituaries.
It does, alright, so I'll keep you informed, it sounds like they will send us more information, but that's the last piece of correspondence. Anything else, I'm moving on. Alright, unfinished business, David Acker, Chuck, you wanna fill us in on that?
We're ready for September 11th, the veterans notices, public notices and everything.
Finish the maps?
He added the structures, like pen and paper. Normally I...
You're satisfied with this?
Yeah, because normally I like to see the structures, but he's having trouble there, so I'm not going to push back. It just appeared in pencil and ink and so there must be something going on with the survey. And ultimately, I had to look back and say, would my decision or the decision of the commissioners be changed, amended, altered, influenced by the structures being added to the subdivision? I cannot see a scenario where that's absolutely essential. So I can respect that he must have had trouble trying to get this data or something to that effect or he would have had to have a new survey done. I don't know the details, I just, you'll see some irregularity there. And on your way out, I have an updated one for you to take home with you, a subdivision plan, so...
We sent that out today, right?
Oh, I might have just was ordering files and threw it into Dropbox just to save it, so he actually would have seen it in Dropbox.
I credit it, it still doesn't change the road name.
Oh, thank you, I'll get after it for that.
We can still go ahead and mourn the hearing, worst-case scenario, we have to cancel it?
Yeah, they don't have to change the name, that'll be just a condition of decision. Normally, you'd like something a little cleaner, but...
It doesn't affect our decision because we know we're targeting.
The decision can be contingent upon...
Misreading that terminology, right. So we plan on having two hearings at the next meeting. Chuck, protocol, just for curiosity, do you call the hearing, adjourn it, then call the second hearing? Or do you just have one adjournment at the end of both of them?
You just, uh, yeah, you open your hearings, you conduct your hearings, and, um, you know, it depends on how formal you want to be. You can close both hearings at the end of the meeting or you can both...
And then go into a regular meeting after that?
Yeah.
Okay, we've all separated.
Yeah, that's right.
With that part, yeah, we'll have the hearing for two different subdivisions, adjourn it and then we'll have a meeting.
Scotty.
I don't think Patrick front-loaded those, we're gonna have to sit through them.
Right, we'll put them on the beginning of the agenda and that's the first thing we do is those, then we go to the second part. Alright.
The public notice that you sent out for the subdivision, used a map, which, I don't think this really matters to us, but the, the display of town highway 12 is incorrect, as far as I know.
The wrong label, or?
It just doesn't go there.
Oh, that's using the state's database, so that's the...
I think they've done an error there, but that really, that really doesn't affect any of the facts of the case that we're addressing.
Uh, I think I canceled this out. This is a colored version of these documents, he's got this. Yeah, he's definitely right, yeah.
This is in our email today or in the Dropbox?
No, I think you had copies of that from the last meeting.
They recognize this color.
Yeah, no, I didn't do color for you last time either.
Anything else with the two subdivisions, not moving on?
Do you want to start those earlier than a regular meeting, say 6 o'clock for the public hearings and then still 6:30 for a regular meeting?
I have folks coming from Montpelier potentially, that would be hard enough.
To get here that early?
Yeah, I get what you're saying, Chris, it's a good idea, but just as a reminder.
I was thinking of regular meeting, any other, um, business we want to get accomplished after the hearings?
Under new business, I got two items, the first one's visiting. Village Center designation, I have talked to some people at Wyndham Regional. Um, I have since found out that Lisa and Eric, and I hope everybody's... Under new business, I got two items, the first one's visiting, Village Center designation, I have talked to some people at Wyndham Regional, um, I have since found out that Lisa and Eric, and I hope everybody else that's been on the committee for a while, have started some of this process, and I think I sent an email explaining that they have to come visit and some other stuff, Lisa emailed and said, I've already done some stuff.
We already, yeah, they visited us, taken place, Lisa wrote the language that went into, uh, a version of the town language we never actually carried forward, uh, beyond the public hearing stage. I thought it was a done deal, that the language we had, the visit we had, really covered it.
Well, I mean, that, that part has been done, but I know, um, Dave, when you were meeting with John Bennett, he had, um, made a comment about us needing to do, and I'm not quite sure what exactly John was talking about.
I think it was a blanket comment, not realizing he's been here, honestly.
Because we do have the language already in the draft.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, and all those steps were done, now, I went back to my Village Center designation files, and this was all done in two thousand fourteen, and, uh, so, um, but I don't think anything essential has really changed, so my, uh, and, uh, the only thing that has changed since then is that the designation is now good for eight years, it used to be for five years, and then you had to review it, now you have to review it after eight years. It's similar to the town plan, which is now also good for eight years, and, uh, also what has changed a lot since then, back then, um, I had a little write-up for the pending commission meeting on May, uh, twelve, two thousand fourteen, in which I said that ninety Vermont towns have it, now it's a hundred and forty-one towns, and twenty-five towns in the WRC district have it, so it's become more and more common, more and more towns have adopted it, and therefore it's all the more important for us to do it, because, um, from the municipal point, point of view, you will get priority, you don't get tax credits and grants for municipal buildings, but you get priority for certain grants if you have it, and if you don't, you are at the bottom of the list.
And there are grants you're not even allowed to apply for, as I understood it, without that designation?
Yes, yes, there are federal and state tax credits, different types.
Tax credits.
Yeah, um, and, uh, so, wh- which require to have the designation.
So is it accurate to say that once our town plan is adopted by the select board, we, you have everything in place to pull the trigger and move that forward at a relatively rapid rate?
We can then apply for it, and there's an application procedure which is straightforward, we just have to do the work, um, you know, filling a couple of forms, we need a formal, uh, decision by the select board, uh, to apply for it. There has to be a map, which WRC is going to help us put together, we, you know, we have to define the village center, and, and again, a, a lot of that.
And that's not been done?
Well, the, the preliminary steps have been done, David, I mean, not David, uh, Richard Amory, who was the person who handles this whole thing, gave to, uh, gave us a presentation, and he walked around the town, and he created, this map actually doesn't have it, he, he gave us the map, but, um, so, 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 yeah, so there's some more work to be done, there's.
Anything controversial on the map, or is it just one of those things we all agree with, and let's move forward?
Well, the state requirements are pretty clear, that it has to be basically the historic cluster, and, um, uh, in most towns, it will include mixed, um, it's kind of a mix of buildings, some, uh, town offices, post offices, town halls, churches, um, commercial buildings, uh, some residential, it cannot include undeveloped open land outside, and just purely residential areas outside of the village center will also not be included, so they will look at it pretty carefully, so that it doesn't get too big, because it cannot be the whole town. Now, it could be, however, different parts of the towns, so like, for instance, um, technically, um, Holdenville could have its own village center designation, I'm not saying that, that makes sense, but, but, like Westminster has four of them, and Rockingham has two of them, and, um, some other towns have like a couple, if they have o- other centers. So, um, um, so we just have to do the work of defining the boundary, which I don't think in the case of our village is gonna be too difficult, it's a pretty defined village already.
I was just wondering, if we might wanna consider Cambridgeport, and maybe working with Rockingham, just, I mean, they seem to be neglected by, by both municipalities, and I'm wondering if we could at least.
Stripped at one.
Yeah, if we could at least keep them, with everyone else getting the designation at least, so they're not at the bottom.
How does that work with, uh, village center crosses two towns, it's not, I think, isn't it?
Well, each, each municipality would have to do their own.
Do their own?
And I don't know, I guess that would be a question to Richard, you know, how would we.
Yeah, I mean, I know we get preference when we have two village center designations on grants, check that off, you get additional points, or some.
But it advances Cambridgeport meeting requirements of a village center?
That was, that was my curiosity.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that either.
You know, clearly, our village is, that's an easy sell.
Yeah.
Cambridgeport is really, it's hamlet, and it's, but, you know, there's hardship there, so they, they might see, look favorably upon attempts to try to invest in that area.
Yeah, but I would think that it makes sense to do the village first, certainly, because that's.
Locked in.
That's important to us, and.
Number one priority.
And that's a step that we really wanna undertake, and that involves more effort too.
What work can we do now, or before, all of the things we need to do in terms of the select board adoption, or do we have to wait until that adoption's done before the very next thing? Or can we start this, so when they adopt it, we've got even more of our act together?
Right, so I think what can be done is the mapping, and, uh, so, uh, I will talk to Richard Amory, um.
There will be an expense for that, correct?
Uh, well, WRC will help with that, and I don't know what.
It's part of your conversation, you gotta find that out.
Um, so, so that probably can get underway.
Okay, a, a serious look at Cambridgeport is in our interest, since a lot of the benefits of village center, I think, in fact, all of them flow to private businesses, not municipalities, and that happens to have one of the only really commercial buildings that we have in town with small businesses that are in potential for more, so.
So V and R is in Rockingham?
Yes.
But the, in fact, the warehouse is engrafted?
Yeah, okay.
Like somewhere between those two.
Um, just I was talking with Bill today about the agenda and what was on it, and I guess Chris Campion was in talking today with Bill, but the village designation, we won't be able to get any sort of, my take was help or funding of any sort until we have a town plan, because we don't have a town plan, we get.
We're not.
Yeah, ab- 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 absolutely, yeah, because what happened in two thousand fourteen, actually, when I first found out about this whole thing, it was like just before the law changed to the effect that it has to be indicated in the town plan that we plan to apply, so we can only apply after our town plan is approved, but, but the prep work can certainly.
That's my thought.
But I, when we were talking about the mapping and the cost, and you thought maybe with original, they're not gonna step in until we have it approved. Are you sure? Do you know that from?
Is that what Chris Campion said?
Yeah, or that's what Bill relayed to me that Chris said today.
Well, I'll clarify that.
It won't happen until our town plan's.
Now, I understand it's Wyndham Regional, but in talking to Bill Bennett, do I get his name right?
John Bennett.
John Bennett, thank you. When I had that long meeting with him, and I showed him our maps, and he said, boy, there's a lot of work to be done, I said, I got no money, he said, well, it's gonna be about eight hundred bucks, get them all fixed, I said, like, I'm not sure what to do, I guess we can't fix them, he said, well, once you figure out what they got, you talk to us, maybe we'll work, figure something out, and he said it very clearly, like, maybe we'll just do it, now, I don't know how their funding works, and if they've got that flexibility, but that was clearly the message I felt from him, was, you know, there's some play in there, it's not an automatic charge per map or something like that, so.
Definitely play.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot of it, you know, it's the ledger, it's kind of informal, the kind of services that a number of towns receive, we've been relatively quiet, so, and this, if it comes up as a special need, then that's something, you know, certainly, if it would otherwise hold up our planned adoption, you know, which we're gonna make the changes for our adoption, but regional conformity, they could be updating, you know, maps right down there with all the new data.
Once we know what we want, we can at least ask.
That's right.
Okay. So that's where we're at, that's the next step after the town plan, but we can, it's back on our radar, and we're gonna start working towards that, and we got, two people have done a lot of work on it already, and we can, can we take the lead on that?
Yeah, as, as soon as the town plan is approved, we can submit the application.
Approved mean adopted by the select board, correct?
And by WRC.
And by WRC, so that adds.
Leadership form ties.
Okay, alright, okay, anything else on village center? Thank you, uh, Grafton Elementary School, uh, Lisa caught this, and I didn't put it on the list, I'm not even sure what our role is, but if you're aware, not aware, they have found PFOA in the water, first time I heard that acronym was a year ago, two years ago, in Bennington, and it was in the paper every day for six months, coming from a factory, so I'm not sure what's going on here, um.
So, um, I think this, um, is for us purely just at this point to monitor the situation, I think we as a community certainly need to, need to be aware, it was on the select board agenda at this last meeting, and, um, uh, as I think everybody has heard by now, um, the Grafton School, um, had a test reading that did not, uh, meet the state's standards.
Think of the second one, it failed also.
Yeah, right, and, uh, so now, what we understand from the last select board meeting is that there is a plan to test two more buildings very close to the school, and see if they get the same kinds of readings, and then kind of take it from there, um, and, um, in the meantime, there is a lot of sort of news reporting on, on a study that was done by three faculty members of Bennington, for obvious reasons, you know, Bennington is of course right at the, sort of the, uh, the, the heart of the problem, because.
Bennington College?
Bennington College, because the, because the original finding that the water came out of the factory near Bennington.
Right.
And that's where the water problem has, has been severe, and so they have started studying it, and they studied a number of municipalities a little further out, one was Shaftesbury, and one was Pownall, I forget what the third one was, and everywhere they studied, they found it, and, um, so this was a little bit alarming, and, um, the conclusion is that it is, um, spread airborne, and it can be spread over a pretty wide area, a hundred and twenty miles, under the prevailing winds. Now, it may be that it's in the state anyway, everywhere, and it just has not been tested, it's a test that's not usually done, uh, when, when people test their water, like, for instance, Rex James had his water tested because of the garage that he lives very close to, and, um, and his water tested fine, but that regular water test does not cover PFOA, there is an extra cost, it's a separate test, so it's usually not tested, so when you go intentionally to test, now, the Bennington people have found everywhere they test, it's there, and.
And Grafton Elementary was a small sampling around the state, they randomly chose, it wasn't like, ooh, we prefer Grafton because they inhabit it, it was just random.
Yeah, it was a pilot program, and now, uh, the, the, the other theory is that besides coming from some chemical industrial facilities, which we certainly don't have many nearby, uh, it could just come from cleaning materials, some waxes and other materials that have been used at facilities from the school.
Anything water repellent?
Is that one?
Including cosmetics, and one of the biggest, uh, producers is foam, fire foam suppression.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the biggest one, Gore-Tex, um, any, any water repellent, and maybe consider.
Used in manufacturing, or it's in the product?
In the product, I mean, used, getting, getting flushed into the water system.
It's actually just.
Think about all the cosmetics that go down the drain.
You're not talking about factory, you're just talking residential?
Residential.
Well, like cleaning products, specifically, that's the thing that seemed to me, so just to clarify, it's actually.
Anything that repels water?
Yeah, it's PFAS in, around here, as opposed to the PFO, whatever it is, uh, that they have in Bennington, so it's a set, same class, but it's a slightly different chemical.
I think it's a subset, I think PFOA is the subset of PFAS, which is like a overarching group of chemicals.
So Lisa, how, how high above the legal limit was?
Twenty-two, and the limit was twenty, but elsewhere.
What were they getting in Bennington?
Uh, I don't know that.
I think a lot more.
But else, elsewhere in the country, the limit is as high as seventy, so Vermont has a very low limit.
Which I appreciate.
Yeah, so, uh, so I think for us, what this means is that we just need to monitor what's happening, and, you know, because we are talking about water, and village water, and all these issues that we have now also incorporated into our town plan, as something that we need to work on in the future, or.
So as new information comes up, let's just make sure it's on the agenda, so we're all sharing information.
That we just monitor the situation.
I did get, I believe, an email from Ed today that one, his well was tested, and it tested fine, so check it, Bill tomorrow, I'm not in the office tomorrow, but I think that came in late this afternoon. I was just scanning my emails really quick before I left, but I can leave that, I threw that out there to let people know, um, don't test it on their own, I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
Anything else on the Grafton Elementary, uh, tangent to it, before we move on, just to keep you informed, you may remember, a couple of months ago, I went down to towns and did one of the many workshops that Wyndham puts on, this was on wastewater treatment and so forth, um, and I got an email two weeks ago saying, everybody attended, how would you like to form a consortium to do a grant, to do further studies, and my response was, I would love to, but I'm Grafton, and we are not eligible for municipal grants because we don't have a town plan, I think it's Camp, Campney, Camp, Campney? Campney was the guy that I think is, 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 um, his response was, as long as we can get three towns to form the consortium, then, then you're welcome to jump onto it. So tomorrow at seven thirty in Newfay, and I have a meeting with those that said, yes, we're interested, and we're gonna start that discussion, and I know what's going, but I just wanna keep you informed, we're doing something, don't worry.
Good, uh, so maybe, uh, what fits here also is that what I brought up with the select board also, kind of related water issue, uh, cyanobacteria, uh, blue-green algae, which now has been found in the Sexton River Town Pond, and the pond was closed, um, officially, because of that.
Invasive species, I assume, or not?
No, no, it's, it's usually, it's, first I just.
Very, so, challenging.
It's just.
Yes.
One weather still.
Yeah, it always happens in the heat.
And the hot water exacerbates it.
Yeah, sure.
And, uh, so, um, we had a meeting of the Sexton River Watership Collaborative, and, and this was discussed, and, uh, then we decided to go over to our pond and take a look, and we had some DEC people at the meeting, and so it was determined that at this point, it does not look like we have any in the Grafton Pond, but it should be monitored weekly, and.
Is it a do-not-swim kind of thing, once it's detected?
It would be a do-not-swim, and don't let your pets in there either, because it's very harmful to animals as well.
Is that followed with the health officer?
Yes, and, 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 and he was contacted, because I brought it up at the select board, and, uh, he basically responded, it's caused by, um, fertilizers from farms, and we don't have any nearby, so I guess he just decided that there wouldn't be.
When you say Grafton Pond, are you talking about Grafton Trails or the Grafton Pool?
No, the town pond, on, on one twenty-one.
The pool, okay, the pool, okay. The pool, okay, the town pool, okay.
Aren't you have lifeguards at the pool?
No, there's a sign, no lifeguard, no duty.
Leave it out, huh?
My phosphorus, phosphorus can be from, uh, just organic matter breaking down. Leaves breaking down, give off a lot of phosphorus.
And in fact, there is a farm nearby, which is currently not being managed as a farm, but, but it has been.
But there's no drainage in Sextons River, wrecked either. I don't have to be worried. As far as at least we've got a flow of water.
But it can be anywhere. It, I, I asked the DEC, and they said, it can be flowing water, it can be anywhere, and because of the hot water, that exacerbates it.
That much is salted out. Cold weather comes, all goes away, and then next you gotta worry about it again.
So that's just another thing that I think we just need to monitor.
Anything else on the new business? Oh, look, town plan. Cool. Alright, first item I put on there is select board feedback, and this goes to, I don't know if you wanna call it a misunderstanding, miscommunication, bad things, I don't know, but, um, the town plan, previous version that we have, all draft, was put on the town website. Three of the five board members looked at it, gave feedback, Bill collated that information, came to our table, we voted not to review or look at that information at that time, and at that point, I threw my copy away, and I have not looked at, I have never looked at the information that was given. Um, I wanna make sure we do this right for everybody, I also, the reason I have this on there is potentially to expedite the process. Maybe I'm wrong. So what I have here, and I leave it up to you, and, and whatever you wanna do is, how do you wanna get feedback? And let me kind of throw it out as a semi multiple choice question. One is that we keep the document to ourselves until we all vote and say it is final, and then we give it to them, and they do with it what they want. Remember, once they get it, they can change every word in it they want. We have the right to give them feedback, probably in writing if we disagree or we have questions, but ultimately, they own the document once we pass it on.
Have to get here.
We have, yes, we have to go through that whole process before we pass it on. Um, and some things may come out there that, that have some impact. I asked about that because, you know, i- is this a public document, is it draft? Or is it a private document? If, you know, in my opinion, once it hits that town website, Charlie or, or anybody else should be able to walk in and say, hey, this was public, I've read it, here's my twenty-seven things that I think about in regards to that.
Absolutely.
So I wasn't sure how it ended up there, there was no set process. I don't want us to control the process from here out here. And whatever process this is, I really don't care, I want you guys to tell me how you wanna proceed with this. Right now, it's a Dropbox, we have copies, nobody else has, other than that version, I think it's still actually on the website. I haven't looked since it was first put there.
So it's still there?
Is it still there?
Yeah.
Somewhat outdated by this point, we've made multiple changes.
Yeah.
Approved, not my changes.
Well, it's all a draft.
Right, right.
But it's, it's the version of May twenty-ninth.
Okay, alright, it's not that outdated then.
No, but my feeling is if people want to give us input, they can submit it in writing, put their names on it, or they can come to a meeting and, you know, speak up. But that a group document that doesn't attribute any, like, specific comment to an individual is not helpful. And so that was the reason I had no interest in that particular one. But of course, if you want to from the town, anywhere along the process, anybody's been welcome to come to these meetings or submit, write, something in writing.
Would not advertise that this document is out there for public review.
I'm guessing who's interested knows that this is going on.
Yeah, so, so there, there was discussion about it at the select board meeting, I think, not this last one, but the previous one, and, uh, Danny Michelson brought it up because he had been out of town and, and came back and he, I think he came to a planning commission meeting and he found out about it, so, so he asked for clarification uh, about what happened with the select board, and, and, uh, and this is actually not really reflected in the minutes of the, uh, select board meeting. So, um, Danny asked, he was looking for clarification, um, what happened, especially with regard to wind being now back in the draft that came from Bill Perrin's, um, from the three people on the select board.
Would some content that was in their edits that we have not seen, is that what you're saying?
It was very similar to what we had seen before, uh, to what Eric had submitted, but we had discussed it, and we had, you know, we went over word by word of those comments, and, and we removed some language and changed some. So some similar language then came back in that version, and, um, so then, um, Bill said, and I'm just looking at my notes from that meeting, that, um, that he had met with Chuck and asking, when is the town plan gonna be done? And, uh, and he said Chuck suggested that perhaps the select board should do some comments to speed the process, and, and so he put together the comments and gave the planning commission. And then Danny asked Joe Palio, um, you know, I heard you say at a previous meeting that wind is dead, so how come commercial wind is now back in this version? And, uh, um, and Joe said, um, the select board can do nothing, ultimately we approve, which is a little confusing, um, and he said it's the planning commission's business, and that about wind, that was a suggestion. And, uh, and then Joe said, um, I don't know how we will vote, and we have not seen a draft, which was a little strange, because the comments were made in response to the draft. So that part was very confusing.
So how would you recommend we proceed?
So at this point, I, I think we just continue and we do our work, and, you know, we make it clear that it's a draft, and we have not finalized it. And as Valerie says, anybody's welcome to give us input, anybody's welcome to attend our meeting.
But if somebody, and Al's, who's Al Sands, if Al wants to give input, please come to our meeting and be aware, Al, you are Al Sands, not a select board member, until we give it to the select board.
Yeah.
Then you can talk as a group, is that accurate, what you're thinking?
Yeah, 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 I think the select board is now trying very hard to say that those comments were not select board comments, although they were presented to us in a compiled form by the town administrator, which-
And they talked to Rob and Stern about it prior.
And they had checked with the town attorney, and so apparently they did have some concern, is this even legal, what we're doing? And they did say that they talked to the town attorney, who said it's okay. But, but then, now they have been saying that it was not a select board document. And Joe said, there's no draft, so maybe Joe, I, I'm not sure that Joe saw that.
I think we should just get on with our work, that's my suggestion.
Okay, uh, I mean, Chris looks like he's ready to say something, then-
Well, go ahead.
I have to agree with Valerie, that, um, it's best to have a copy of what we're working on, available if somebody wants to make a comment, they can. To try to contain it within this group, um, is probably not gonna be successful. And then, the people who are innocently looking for it, uh, will not be able to get it, and those that really want it, for whatever purpose they might want it, uh, will get it, and it becomes unfair to the public. So openness is a better approach.
Chuck? Do you have the ability in Dropbox to set that as read only for the general public, but any editing rights for the seven of us?
Yes.
And then we'll put that link on the town page, and as we update it, they'll see that live document grow and change as we move forward, instead of just the static may issue. And then anybody, make it clear, we can have Bill put a note there, and anybody wants to come to our planning commissions, is there a schedule? Please give us feedback, and then, as we closer, we'll use that as a platform to say, and we have formal hearings on these dates, et cetera, et cetera, if you're following this process.
A point on the link on the town page, I believe, because of the security business, they don't want to allow links up on that town website, so a different means needs to be-
But to Dave's point, we can give it there, and we just have to do it a little differently.
Fortunately, that's what we'd like to have happen if we can.
Agreed, I think that's an excellent idea. Um, that means though the drafts that are sent to commissioners beforehand, they don't get posted. That's internal to you all, that you will discuss in the public. At the end of the night, Dave and I package what has been decided, get it over to Bill, we'll post it. Sound reasonable? And allows anybody that wants to download that document? Because originally we put it online, because tonight, you know, it's not easy to get stuff online. That was a request of the commissioners, I don't recall how it came to me, and I do recall being requested to do it, so I did it.
Could you all just, um, go over the timeline with me of what we're, we're looking at? And is there a certain point where if this drags on, you know, due to things beyond our, our control, that we, we need at least get a, we publish town plan, and then work anything else as amendments?
I candidly cannot give you a timeline, because the timeline that I was given a year and a half ago, I took a select board meeting to discuss, and that's when Lisa pointed out, it's like, no, that's no longer accurate. We have to warn a hearing, and there's like a massive time length on that warning, right?
It's like this thirty-day requirement.
Thirty days, compared to most, which are fifteen, to me, that, that's a long time.
My, my concern is that if we're without a town plan for a length of time, do we put our, the town at risk for?
Well, we are in that situation already.
Obviously, if it ran out.
Yeah, so do we need to just approve, try to expedite the approval process, and then keep working the town plan?
I think there's a balance between when is it good enough? But it doesn't have to be perfect, let's get something approved so we can get some stuff done.
Right.
But there is a benchmark-
Just so it can be legal and be covered, and then we can continue to work the document as a commission, but as amendments too.
Well, but I think that that's what we're doing, and I think we're very close.
I mean, even say that's-
We'll find out in the next ten minutes how close we are before. Alright, so-
Well, that's why we have special meetings now, unfortunately, one had to be canceled for reasons.
So to be clear, I am gonna go to the select board, and when I meet with them, I'm gonna talk to them about that our draft, as it is updated, will be available to the public, we want it on the website, and we look forward to feedback from all citizens individually, and if any one of them wants to give us feedback, they're welcome to, but as a select board, we're not going to entertain their feedback until we're done and it goes through the official process. We wanna avoid that hassle again, is that clear and accurate?
Well, it could, they didn't actually vote this to select board.
Correct, I understand.
My concern to the point, I think just emphasizing the individuals, anybody's welcome to have input, as long as we know who's providing it.
That's the piece that you pointed out earlier, don't combine three people and go put names on it, okay. Alright, moving on then, I got review previous meetings work, um, God, I've been thinking about this, and I have no clue. You got two new drafts from me via email, the second one came late last week. It obviously looks radically different than what we had at the June meeting, but I believe it's ninety-nine point nine percent content-wise, not changed at all. There's some pretty pictures put in, there's definitely some formatting that's gone on. He twisted my cousin's arm, and she printed seven copies of this thing. She wasn't thrilled about it, but I love her, she did it. I apologize to the audience, I don't have copies, but we can, we're gonna try and make this available to everybody.
I thought about doing this one, I was like, I can't keep doing this every meeting.
Is that seven there?
Okay, so, so tell us now, Dave-
Now the question-
What, what, what is this, is this the same document you emailed a couple of days ago?
This is the identical document with no changes that you got emailed, uh, when I set up the agenda. Yes, it is different than the one I attached when I sent the previous agenda for the April twelfth meeting, it's slightly different than that one.
Okay, so this is-
And you'll notice there's a date down at the bottom, this was printed, it, August twenty-eighth, so that's-
So this is the same as your most recent?
Correct, yes. Yes, sir, go ahead and get the eighth.
No, that's okay, it's beautiful. So you, you gotta flesh this out as to how, no, I've been Googling at it, Googling at it for a weekend. How do, how do we get this far along? Basically, you've been living with this plan for a little while? The changes are just amazing.
Friends now, Mr. Document and I.
I agree with what you're saying, there's no substantive changes to the policies and everything, but the readability of it, the flow-
I tried to search strictly to that portion of it.
It's beautiful.
My question to you is, is I started on this, and my original plan was, if you remember the last time we met, we did one chapter, I packed that one chapter, we discussed it, we seemed to come to consensus, I moved on. I got into the next one, and I kinda started into a rabbit hole, and all of a sudden I realized that it's not a chapter. I literally started on page one, and I've gone through this whole thing. I'd be glad to talk about it in content, we can talk about it, um, page by page, we can do a variety of approaches. I'm not sure how to approach it. I would like to today next, deal with the land use and maps piece. That to me seems to be the last big controversial hurdle. I didn't even know it's controversial, because we've never discussed it, maybe y'all have.
Clarifying, how about clarifying?
One piece needs to be decided by this group.
Sure.
And so with your permission, I'd like to move to that piece. Specifically, the map I sent you, and I have a copy of it here, it's crayon, I apologize for my kindergarten work, but hopefully it'll generate a discussion, and these I did make extras, I think I can, I, I got some for you guys for this one.
We can share also.
Okay. And in correspondence with this map, this is the way I look at it, and I'd like to propose it, the issue to me comes down to definitions. Do we accept the Wyndham Regional definitions or not? And if we do, I personally believe that this map is what it would look like. And I'm not saying this is the map I want, this is the map with my opinion on it, in terms of I want this to be for bears, and this to be for rabbits, and this to be for oil rigs. It's more, based on their definitions, these are the different zones. And that includes, by the way, be clear, the critical resource piece as well. Um, I've got extras if you guys, this is just a sketch, I also brought-
Chuck, have one, Chuck, we can share.
I've got some right here, I got one, this one. I also brought blank town maps, if you wanna do some drawing today, so we can communicate. Alright, if you disagree, again, I got no connection with this thing at all. If you could, oh, look at that, I stick my mind like upside down. Let me find the page.
Planning by Crayola, I love it.
I would say land use starts on page eight, and if you turn to page nine, if you give me a minute, I'll kinda walk through. That graphic there, um, there's, I want to replay. There is a graphic in Wyndham's regional plan that looks like that. They predefined, I think it said in my, the way I wrote this, eight designated areas, that graphic kinda shows more dense, more busy to nothing but rabbits and worms over on the far side. They have since, according to their document, entertained the idea of adding a ninth category called critical resource versus resource. To me, this is where, and again, this is my perception only, where the controversy is. I have defined resource lands, and it says right in there somewhere, these lands can be actively worked and used. They're, they're not nature preserves that are not to be touched, but any kind of development should be balanced with the idea that this is bear habitat, and it is, um, large block corridors, and it is those kinds of things. It's, but then the critical resource, you see the red areas I filled in, to me, those are the ones that, that this town should fight hard to make sure don't get developed. Turner being the obvious one to begin with, we don't want a bunch of condos going up there so they kinda look down on the old cabin and say, look at the cabin. I did not by accident label the brown area is rural productive, and I forgot to put that in the legend there. I think when I sent this, I sent you a series of cut and pasted maps on where my logic came from. One was the large habitat blocks and corridors. One was the bear habitat. One was the Wyndham Regional plan map with a cutout of our area that kinda is all aligned and that's where it came. Now, if you don't go with the definition, this all goes out the window and we can help with anything we want. Or you could say, Dave, I've read the definitions and I disagree, this is not what you mean, that's fine too. I'll stop talking and turn it over to you, but I would love at the end of tonight, to come up with a consensus that yes, that is the proposed future land use map for the town of Grafton. That is my goal. Boxing gloves? Lisa?
So one very strong reason to follow your logic is what we've just been discussing a few minutes ago, the timeline and the urgency to get this plan done. If we follow your logic and accept the WRC definitions and maps, we are basically done. If we don't, we have an enormous amount of work ahead of us and we will be here, maybe not even some of us anymore, a year from now. So the other comment about the WRC maps, this has been discussed before. They will be updating their mapping. That's been stated already in the...
Cause we're ready to play.
They will update their maps. And so I think it would make a lot of sense for us to accept their definitions and maps for now, so that we can check that one off and be done. And then when they adopt new maps, then we can look at those, we can, as Chris was saying earlier, we can...
We have the right to amend.
We can amend our plan later, then we would have also something to work on with WRC's new maps, new updated maps.
Eric? Yes. Wyndham Regional did have a critical resource land designation in the text of the plan, but never designated anywhere on the map.
Correct.
And I happen to agree with what you've done as far as identifying our critical resource areas as falling within their definition for what a critical resource area is. If one were to make the brown areas on this map rural productive land, that would be fine with me.
They are, I just tried to label it that way.
Question however, that all of what you have labeled as resource land would necessarily fall outside of the definition for productive rural land. There's, part of the problem is that Wyndham Regional has tended to use resource lands as a way to block just about anything in the way of human intervention. They don't, talk about lands can be actively worked, for instance, that kinda thing. And they block improvements of old town roads from class four to class three. They block power line extensions along things like the old roads or into places where someone is building a house. They use resource lands much more in the vein, I believe, of critical resource lands rather than just resource lands. If they, and I don't know if they will modify their language some to, when they use the word uniqueness, irreplaceable or fragile nature, important ecological function, that to me falls more in the critical range of things than it does in just resource lands. And I know that a lot of locations within this map that are located, designated resource could be not considered unique, fragile and some kind of wilderness area. They have been previously farmed, there are old roads that run through them. And they're not that different from the brown areas here in many cases.
Would you recommend no resource land, or so what areas would you recommend?
I'm saying that, well, before I would said, make it all productive, productive rural land. But if we are to designate resource lands in this green block, I think that the riparian areas, the string corridors, the very steep areas could perhaps logically fall within that, but there are areas that don't fall within that kinda characteristic that could more logically be within productive rural land. I'm not prepared to get out a crayon and divide it up right now, but I think a little bit at least of what is all green as resource land could be productive rural land. Just, that's my opinion.
Well, why can you don't stop anywhere?
You can actually have habitations there.
Well, to be clear, there is, this is not zoning. There is nothing you can't do on one and the other. It comes down to if there's a conflict at the state level, then you go and say, hey, this is what we as a town decided. And that has some weight, if you will, but it's not like, oh, because we did that, you can't do it. Then at the state, they can say, well, that's an interesting piece of information. Let's go around and get other feedback, input?
I just feel like we have some reasonable approximation of maps now. We're not gonna be able to hire somebody to make maps and we should just go with what has been suggested by Wyndham Regional and amend it later.
Matt?
I agree with that. I like what Dave has done, much better than what Wyndham Regional has.
Chris, I don't think we've heard yet from you.
I don't know, I'd have to look at it more and compare the two.
We don't have one from the previous plan to remind everybody. We had a map, but that was more about elevation designations than anything else. It's not like we can update that to anything else. Jim?
I agree with Val in a way, but I also agree that there is a lot of green. That is, that is a lot of restriction on a lot of often.
And again, I said it before, I'll say it again, I just, I got my pencil out and you brought up one. One of the designations in their definition is any land over twenty-five percent green. Well, there's a map that shows that. And example would be as I looked over down in this corner towards Cambridgeport, at what point do you become a spotty checkerboard map that says, well, this hundred and fifty acres should be and this twenty acres next to it shouldn't be, but the next patch over should be critical and the next one over that should be, you know, at some point up here is a good example. This would've been patchwork and I finally said, you know what, no, just color the whole corner in. Cause that was real patchy when I started breaking into those two categories, so. Hey, Dave?
Can you riff to the second? Besides the length of the process going on and on and on, with these, if we are new maps, who would pay for those? Is there rent money out there or does that have to come out of some of our budgets?
We would do that earlier and there's two answers. Number one, if we did it right, we would've had money in our budget to say, hey, this town plan's coming up, we better budget an extra thousand bucks for map making, we don't have that money. My talk with Mr. Bennett was, and Chuck has alluded to it, they have a ledger that sounds a little wishy-washy.
Yeah, I know, I've heard that before.
And it may be that if we go with it, go to them with this or any of the other work we've done, they might say, hey, that poor graft in town, let's just do it and get done with it. And I don't have the answer until we get to that point.
We don't have a cost figure on that. What about cost?
The one number that John Bennett threw out to me was about eight hundred bucks is what most town pays when they put their grouping of maps together. We didn't have any deeper discussion than that though.
Again, I think John Bennett and Chris Cavendish probably at this point would say, we are gonna be updating all of our maps.
Right.
That's, that's part of our stated goals. So why don't you wait till we do that and in the meantime, go ahead and finish your town plan and then you can amend your...
And we don't need an entire suite of maps either. There's a bunch of energy maps that are done, a lot of things that are already done, so.
What we do here will weigh heavily on what WRC does for the updating maps. I think if we make a statement now, that is much more effective than trying to have them second guess us going forward with their map update.
So Eric, short of trying to hire somebody to do new maps, what, how do you envision doing this in a timely way? Cause I don't have an agenda myself, I just wanna get it done.
Well, I'm not implying that I have an agenda, but I do wanna preserve the ability of residents to work their lands. And many of the, many of the, there are many areas within the green which I believe fall into easily worked lands, have been worked before and could easily morph into the brown. If we have to make a choice between this map and what WRC presently has, I'm definitely in favor of what Dave has done.
So what if we did what Dave has done, lit a caveat at the bottom, some little footnote that says on a case by case basis, the planning commission would entertain, you know, whatever language you want in there that makes it feel like so people could still on a case by case basis apply to work their own land the way they want to with very minimal regulation or input. I don't know what the language would look like, but would that satisfy kind of your concerns?
That's coming very close to it. I don't know how that would be looked upon by someone using the map, but certainly addresses what I'm most concerned about.
Will we do that, Chuck? Like approve a map with like some footnote that just says, you know, some of these borderline areas on the border are brown and green for instance. You know, may actually have, you know, call it dual categories and so it shouldn't be considered part of the best, you know, concrete document in that regard.
I mean, that's inherently the point of these planning maps is that they are for planning purposes. That we're not gonna be drawing this map. I mean, it would be very difficult to pick this concept and then just start looking at parcel lines and picking somebody's parcel in, somebody's parcel out. That would be very challenging to argue that why this versus that.
Why do you put...
There's just, it's a planning level document to begin with, it's not gonna be a regulatory action unless it's just something to do with Act two forty-eight. There are ways with cartography now that you can fuzz along and make these more general looking. So that, you know, so there's other alternatives. That's higher level cartography, that would be, someone would probably pay more extra.
You will notice I put the footnote there for a complete explanation of this on the bottom of page nine. Go to the Wyndham Regional's plan on page seventy, because they clearly, they go, I mean, they got eight, nine pages of definitions. I tried to narrow it down to a page, so we have no idea what we're talking about. They use terms like this is a coarse, what do they call it, a coarse grid mentality, that it's a satellite view to give you a general idea, but they're not concrete and it's more for discussion. We can put that in here as well, but it's clear and that's why I put that footnote there. When you go to read, you know, I gave you the Reader's Digest version, when you go read the full thing on page seventy, it says exactly what you're saying. So, I agree with you, so that's my point on that. Again, not for zoning, that's not what this is about.
And you'll see that on all our maps, it's for planning purposes only, general ideas. It's not like we're setting zoning to this, where you would be parcel by parcel specific.
I guess I see, yes, go ahead.
How different is your map, I can't see their map, the Wyndham Regional map. How different is your map from their map? And no, you know, I'm not questioning your judgment or your ability to do this, but I couldn't come up with this. How did, how did you go about changing it?
Okay, first of all, when you come up about the Wyndham Regional map, the only map that I'm aware of is in the town plan and that is a one page that has the entire region. So when you zoom into Grafton, it's a pretty simplistic picture. That does have these lines, by the way, these folks have an email where I have about, I don't know, six or seven maps that I cut and pasted that made this.
So you basically made this from their map?
No, but, yes, no.
So how did you...
I started, I didn't change, I started with a blank map. I read, reread, read, reread the definitions. That's what the definitions are. I got out my red pencil and said, what is the areas that is so sacred to us, we don't want anybody to mess with them? So I started with red. Kinda that's the most important.
How did you determine that?
By their definition, a critical resource area in general, it says here in the document, sites that are particularly sensitive and should be given maximum consideration for protection. Although there is no specific zoning regulations or ordinance prohibiting development on these private lands, on the private land, it is expressed desire of the town that no development occurs on the critical resource. At that point, Dave Culver stepped in and said, what's my value system? Turner gets red. We have a land that identifies rare habitat and endangered species. There's a couple of Xs of those points on there.
So somewhere these lands were somehow already determined to be in this class.
You see Molly Beatty is filled in, Putnam is filled in, Rockingham. Rockingham Village Forest is in Grafton, if you didn't know that. It is.
And the green?
The green is called resource land and this is really the controversial area in my opinion. The original mapping, and I hold this up, has resource as the most sacred. Critical on our map is the next one over, if you will, that we've added. So green is...
So they don't have critical on their map?
They do not. What they have in their...
They have a definition.
Exactly.
They don't have it.
They're talking about adding it.
But it is not on their map, you're absolutely correct. So those are purely mine. Part of my reason is that this board in this town is conflicted on, you know, some say, no, turn the whole town into a state park and don't let anybody ever dig for worms in it and others like, no, put up sky rises, we don't care and that balance is built before.
So when the Wyndham Regional did this, were there award experts? How did they determine this?
When you look at their definitions, they start identifying, I'm talking about the resource lands now. They have a definition. Resource lands are dominated by lands requiring special protection or consideration due to their uniqueness, irreplaceable or fragile nature, important ecological function. Resource lands can be actively worked and used, but future development should be weighed against the desire to preserve the area. What I did not put in there is a very, probably a full page definition and it starts listing things like bear habitat. Now, we have a map called Bear Habitat. I colored it in Bear Habitat. They listed any area with twenty-five percent slopes or greater. Well, we have a map that shows all the twenty-five percent slopes, so I just, that's the way I developed it. One of the areas is village, that's straightforward, it's, we don't have it specifically designed, but that's part of our process, it's coming. You've got the resource land I talked about, rural residential, and this is like, I don't wanna be trite about it and say, who cares, but I don't care that much. You've got village, you've got hamlet, you've got rural residential. What's the difference? Eh, depends on who you talk to. You know, there are some differences in there. But for example, Cambridgeport, is that a hamlet or rural residential? I made it rural residential because hamlets often have services and you don't, you see the maps there, I chose East Vinrow because if you look at a map, there's a crap load of houses out there in that area and to me that seemed rural residential. Houghtonville was in there, you know.
Works for me.
And then Cambridgeport. Again, that's, to answer your question directly, it's my opinion based on their definition.
So my question is, now we have a map based on one person's opinion, Eric, for discussion purposes. Eric's kinda not crazy about this map. The Wyndham Regional has a map, they're going to change it. You know, it just seems like it's an important thing and it shouldn't be determined by your opinion or your opinion. And there seem to be some experts needed in this, this decision making, which the Wyndham Regional provides, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
And are going to be updating and providing.
They will be updating.
They have cartographers. They, they're not gonna send us wildlife specialists and that kind of thing. You know, they have, they'll tell, if they, you say, hey, I want this green, they have cartographers, they'll paint their maps green and make them pretty. I don't, if you're asking, will they provide us experts in the field so they can help us determine what's critical versus resource? I don't think they provide.
Well, they will be relying on BioFinder, which is the A and R set of maps that does have.
And this, I use BioFinder heavily on this.
And, and, and that is kind of a scientific process that, that they will be following. In this, in this last, um, plan from two thousand and fourteen, they did not have that yet. But that's what they will have in the next set of maps that is upcoming.
So could you go, if you, if you pass the plan now with their existing maps, could you then, when you get, get to the point where they're redoing the maps, could you go with your map to them and say, this is what we're thinking about?
They don't have an existing map that we can use. They, they have a map, and again, if you zoom into our town, it really doesn't tell us a lot. It has basically a green line through the middle of it, green and brown. It's not the detail. Doesn't say we can't use it. I mean, there's actually no rule system.
We can. The only part here that you've labeled critical resource, I think you probably labeled that one anyway, um, that I would disagree with would be the town forest, basically what we're setting the middle on.
You know, I question that, cause we're talking about putting a solar field in there. So if you made a critical resource, it might be an issue.
And if you look across the street, I don't see anything there that's, uh, fits in this designation of uniqueness, irreplaceable, fragile nature, and ecological function.
Yeah, it looks like three quarters of the town is classified as unique, irreplaceable, or fragile.
And as an example of areas that.
Well, and, and let me answer Chris's question again. You're seeing the short definition? When you expand that definition, um, large habitat blocks. Well, I sent you a map where they've identified large habitat blocks. It is the green area. Um, bare habitat happens to be the green area. Over twenty-five percent gray, green area. So this, this unique is one word, but it's really so much more than that.
But if it's three quarters of the town, how unique is that?
Maybe we're.
Well.
And my.
Doesn't seem unique.
No, I, I think, I think you.
Or irreplaceable.
I think you have to kind of read the definition of what it means. It does not mean blanket, absolutely no development in that area. Uh, the, when you read the definition, okay, so there's unique, irreplaceable, and fragile. But then it goes on, resource lands should be preserved and protected to the greatest extent possible. Any development or land use in these areas should be designed to have a minimal impact on natural resources and should include effective mitigation measures that will protect natural resource values. So therefore, it doesn't mean that that.
That's not what we want, right?
Yeah, we want protection. It doesn't say you cannot develop anything. It just says you have to develop carefully. So, so it's not like a blanket, don't go there.
To me, that's why adding critical resource was so important, because the critical resource was not a category. I would not have green on this map at all.
So the critical is don't go there.
The red is, yes.
Critical is don't go there. Resource does not mean don't go there. It's.
Does mean you need to.
Go carefully.
Right, which we want.
So, so, so you have to know that.
Whereas rural productive is just another notch down that there's already things going.
But what, what determines what's rural productive and what's resource?
I go back to the definitions. If you read those definitions, you know, you, you use the term, and I don't take offense with it. This is one person's opinion. I tried to be very non-opinion on that.
That's what I was trying to get.
Right, is, is this is. This is my interpretation of Wyndham's definitions. Now, if you give each of you the map, blank, and come up with your own definitions, I think they'd be similar, but I'm sure there would be some differences.
Listening to Lisa's explanation, that makes more sense.
Yeah, that's, that's the definition. It's not an absolute no go.
And it would make people cautious.
Go with caution, go with caution.
And it would make other people comfortable. We could add, in some additional language to that, to address your concern. It said, we're not saying no develop, we're saying cautious development.
It doesn't say.
Well, it's already there, Eric.
I know, but I'm just saying, if it makes somebody else feel better, I'm happy to have additional language. That's all.
We should do something about this surrounding land right here, though, that really doesn't deserve to be a critical resource area.
Any thoughts on that from other members? To be clear, I don't think you see my fingers pointing. Where we're living, where we're sitting right now is town forest land.
Right.
I filled it in just cause it's town property. The other thing I realized I didn't fill in, tell me we should or not, is the town, it's, it's town property and it's silly and we don't want people building on it, but nobody will, cause we own the areas, so.
So you consider forest blocks and habitat connectors as well?
Yes. Yes, you have a map that I sent you an email of with two maps of those?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're fulfilling that one seventy-one?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, which we have to.
We have to. Yeah. We talked about this back in March and we went over some dialogue and Chuck, you may have it in your notes from March. It was March, our March meeting, I believe.
Yeah.
We went over this thoroughly and we, while I've read on, we're waiting for it. In fact, we had some slides that we shared back and forth that day. And we've been there with this already, so.
What about the critical resource area, places like the Treyhand property that's now, uh, people buy out the Wayne Park? That would be considered critical. You can't do anything with it. I know it's town property, but it's also preserved now. Would that fall under critical?
They don't need to be protected. They just can't be developed. There's a difference.
Do it be the idea of, if you're gonna label here, then I can see labeling.
You know, that just says additional parks, you know, listed blah, 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 obviously fall into this, but we're beyond the code, the skills of this group.
I can chirp my colored pencil.
Ran out of time.
I just wanna brush.
It's getting a little.
Going through my kids' boxes.
Find the detail for the purpose of that.
That's the balance I didn't know either, is, you know, how, you know, this property, then this half acre, and then this half acre, and then this half acre, or is it more?
For a planning map, I don't think you can do that.
No.
No.
It's a zoning map, not a planning map.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I see two options right now. We can have a motion and vote on this. Um, or the second option I, I think would be Eric has issues, we can postpone it until the next meeting, but I want this voted on.
Yeah.
We could move forward and Eric would come with his own proposal.
So I, I would, um, like to move that we, um, accept the map that Dave has drafted with a possible couple of additions.
Can we make those concrete right now and not use the word possible?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, yeah, yeah, so, um.
Let's start with the, with the Grafton Forest Park, what's this place called?
The, the town garage.
Area. That, do we want that as red or not?
No.
I'm seeing, shaking, again, we're not voting. I guess I'm, I'm kind of helping Lisa form her proposal, or she's, cause she hasn't finished her motion technically.
No, I, I haven't. No, it's still in the works. Um, so, yeah, so what do we wanna do with that? Um, with the town garage area.
I'd say make it in your proposal, whatever you want, and then we'll vote on it and go from there. You have the floor.
I move that we accept Dave's draft map.
Can we forward it in a second?
I'll second that, but then I think we might need some further discussion.
We have a motion in a second. It's on the floor, and technically, those that make the motion get to speak first. If anyone had, or you said it all already. We can also amend the motion if there's any money.
We can amend it?
Yeah.
You have that right?
I'd like to amend that the town forest area, including the garage here, be considered, um, productive rural land instead of critical resource.
Is there a second on the amendment?
Oh, second amendment.
Second on the amendment. Ready for parlay pro folks? Any discussion on the amendment? If there's no discussion on the amendment, we're gonna vote on the amendment right now.
Yes.
Should we add, change the, the proposal from as is to changing the town forest to productive rural? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So now the motion reads to adopt the map as written with that one change. Any other discussion or amendments?
Well, we're going from critical to rural productive. You skipped right over the resource.
And I think his reasoning is cause it's totally surrounded by rural productive, but I'll let Eric speak to that.
Well, it's not only surrounded by rural productive, but the nature of the land, working lands goes to that. It is definitely working land, but.
You gotta gravel pit adjacent here.
Cut timber across the way.
The board sent a track out back. Any more discussion? All those in favor, Chris?
I just can say I'm, I'm hesitant. Uh, I, I think it's too restrictive with, you know, three quarters of the town being resource.
Even with Lisa's clarification of that, so do you want, so then do you wanna make a motion to put a clarified footnote in there?
Well, no, my, my, um, concern has to do with what words align between resource and rural productive. And what's the determinant?
There are.
Fuzzy big.
There are existing definitions and, and you may wanna visit them again. They, they exist.
It's worth reading the Wyndham Regional plan, four, five, six pages. I, I will read what it says. You know, this is high value forest and agricultural soils that are in productive use, and when in productive use contribute to the working landscape, so.
Where, where did the term natural land go?
Natural.
Natural lands.
Not familiar with it, or was it?
Back in March, when we were talking about Act one seventy-one, I'm just back in my one seventy-one notes, we talked.
I don't think that enters in.
No.
Mapping map at this point anyway.
No, it doesn't even build specifically, but I'm saying.
Okay. My, my concern is that we are too restrictive as far as impacting, uh, working landscape, that historically, most of the town has been.
What would you recommend, in order, you're talking about changing green to brown to simplify your comment? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, or, or just, you know, I guess I'd want to grant your authority to see why, you know, three quarters of the town is unique and irreplaceable and can't be classified as, as working landscape, rural.
Can I go back? And I think Lisa.
Can't be developed.
Do you have the printout of the email I sent, the original one? Yeah, that one, if you're in the hand, you're holding up. Cause that's got the maps there that define my map. For example, the last one is the twenty-five percent gray map. So if you look at anything, it's red. That should be according to their definition, not mine, should be green.
Right.
You don't want people building on twenty-five percent gray, or you want anything to.
Right, and that's where, and you can see, you know, where.
Now, is twenty-five percent gray.
It's not.
Land?
Three quarters of the town.
So.
No, it's not.
So on this map, um, this area which corresponds pretty much to the green is the highest priority interior forest blocks, which need to be preserved.
And the one below has the corridors, so.
Yeah. Highest priority. See, that's basically all the green area there.
A, a, a map of the county that was this big, I zoomed in and cut a little piece out of just Grafton. But she has that print. You can see how simplistic it is, cause it's the best way to describe it. You know, there's not much to, to, to. Additional comments, Chris? Anybody else?
Perhaps Valerie's footnote to interpretation?
Could you repeat that, Valerie? Could you repeat the?
Well, I was just saying, Lisa pointed out that there's already protective language, but if you just wanted to clarify it further, you could add an additional footnote, that's all, saying whatever you wanted to say to make it clear that it doesn't mean you cannot develop, which already says, as Lisa points out, in the language that describes this. But if you felt more comfortable just clarifying the definition further, you could make a motion to be clear. I feel comfortable with the definition that's in there. I'm perfectly fine. I just want everybody to feel comfortable. I'm feeling like it's well explained. We're not having a problem here, but I want you to feel good about it.
Yeah, again, my concern is that resource land is too restrictive when I, I think productive rural.
Can you read the definition? Do you have it there?
I'll be happy to.
Accurate.
I think if Lisa reads it, you're gonna feel better. I really do, Chris.
Okay.
Is that Wyndham Regional or our subset?
This is Wyndham.
Directly from them.
Yeah. So resource lands require special protection or consideration due to their uniqueness, irreplaceable, or fragile nature or important ecological function. Resource lands include lands over twenty-five hundred feet in elevation, identify bear travel corridors, areas hosting significant plants, animals, and ecological communities as designated by Vermont's Non-Gain and Natural Heritage Program, or by federally identified endangered and threatened species, unique and fragile natural areas, riparian areas in the buffers, wetlands, flood plains, shorelands, steep slopes over twenty-five percent, and finally scenic corridors or vistas as identified in town plans. Resource lands should be preserved and protected to the greatest extent possible. Any development or land use in these areas should be designed to have a minimal impact on natural resources and should include effective mitigation measures that will protect natural resource values. The most appropriate uses for resource lands are conservation and management of natural resources and limited low impact, very low density rural uses.
Words that really were important to me is, she used the word should often, but never used the word shall. Should be used, not shall be used. I mean, that's a huge difference between the two. Other comments?
Natural resource lands.
One new definition, new type?
She just said it. How many times did you say natural in there? When you say resource land.
Resource land. No, it's resource.
That's their term. They don't use their term.
The definition of resource land.
Oh, it's terrible, cause we have two maps called resource maps that have nothing to do with this term we're making.
I like the natural resource land because it brings in.
Yeah, well, no, I don't think we're gonna introduce, yes, another definition into this.
So that might be something to tweak in the future. You might be able to live with it.
In the future, that's not, makes sense, but.
And you could talk to Wyndham Regional about, hey.
Yeah, no, they, they twist it over and over in a lot of their, uh, terminologies.
The more you're reading, the more you realize it's just a bunch of fluffy words that you don't have.
Yeah.
It's, I'm a black and white guy in this kind of stuff, and it's so gray.
Especially the resources they're talking about are the natural lands.
Right, but, but I think for now, we have to go with what we have here. I, I agree with you, but.
So along with the maps, we need to have policies and goals of what this map means.
Yes, and those are very important, because those will be looked at just as much as anything that's on our map. And in fact, even maybe more, what we say in our policies and, and goals.
Still have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
During this most discussion.
Yes. But do you think some of those policies, like twelve months ago?
Probably.
Just looking back in page eight and ten.
Any other comments, questions, concerns related to the motion? To repeat the motion, Lisa proposes to accept the map as drawn with the one edit being changing the Grafton Town Forest to productive resource lands. Did I get that correctly?
Productive rural.
Productive rural, thank you. Yes, productive rural. Rural productive is the proper term.
Perfect. Productive rural, I think.
Productive rural lands is the, is the proper term. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Oppose, the ayes have it. This is the map until we vote to change it. We've got ten minutes left. All in favor of proving this as this is moving on? I took a shot. Probably not.
I trust you.
Well, the, the question now for you as a group is how to approach. Well, the, the question now for you as a group is how to proceed. Let me throw stuff at you. We have two meetings in September. I would like a goal of us having consensus on a complete document by the end of September. It's two meetings away. Chuck just had a little pee stain, I saw.
Right, I'm just checking my calendar just to anticipate what-
11th and 25th.
Well, no, I know that part, but I'm trying to see when we would advertise for a public hearing, that's why.
Okay. I'm not saying it's possible.
I don't see why not.
I would ask, your homework assignment is, is go home and read, starting on page one, this document and, and find the things that are wrong. Yeah, yeah.
But this doesn't have the markups, they, it doesn't show.
They do if you know how to use Word.
But not on this.
I did print it, yeah, they're all in there.
Yeah.
The Word document I sent, when you go to review, show markup.
But not this one.
I did print it, no, there's none. This is a clean, non-markup copy. Yeah, I, I went to print that, it was like 190 pages each, because it adds massive amounts of, of garbage to it, and I was like, no, I can't, she won't agree to that.
This is not for the public, just our eyes.
The, the official public document right now, if we're gonna share it, is the one that sits in Dropbox, is what I keep saying. Because that's one that we all voted or agreed on, one page align.
With this new revision of this.
And that can be part of it, yes, yes.
So if you envision, I'm going up on page one, chapter one, and great consensus.
That's my question for you guys. What I would love to have happen, honestly, is you get a pen out and you go through this very carefully and we walk in and you can say, Dave, my first problem is page 25. Anybody got a problem before page 25? Good, let's get to page 25. Who's next? Lisa said 58, good, let's get there and skip the stuff.
And that's what you've been asking us to do all along, and some of us have been doing.
But now it's critical. I know you're really good at it, so.
I've been doing that even though my eyes are not happy about it.
The couple of things that, that are not completely done, that I will point out, that I do need some guidance on. One is, you'll see that the, I didn't add or delete any of the tables, but man, there's a lot in there, and do we need every one of them, and why? There are some updates that I remember you pointed out that we have not seen yet, and I gotta figure out how to do that. For example, the grand list charts are still old and, do you have that electronically that I can just cut in pieces here or not?
Um, I can send it to you.
If you can.
And I can give it to Chuck and he can insert it.
With five minutes left, we don't have time to go through that, but I would like to go through all of these and say, do we need every one of these appendixs? Grafton patches, yes, fantastic. The other thing, I came up with my own way after really looking at it for a long time. If you could turn to page 76. This is all new to you, you have not seen this before, I'll explain what you're looking at there. In the original document, there was about eight, not eight, five pages of, it just said goal one, and then there was all this list of stuff. And I had a hard time figuring out what it was saying, what it was talking about. But what it is, is a cross reference, it says, state goal one, how did you meet it? We met it in land policy one, and land recommendation five and seven, and in economy, policy eight, et cetera. So one of the things that I still need to do separate, I think, I think we all need to do, is look at our goals, policies, and recommendations. The one that I point out is the town government one. We need a committee of about 600 people, if that is the goal we expect this town to commit to, because there's like five pages of goals. It, it's, it's an insane amount of, of recommendations. It's not possible. So we keep them there. I've already started to do some combining. Example, I found that there was three that all dealt with childcare, and I've combined it into one, simple stuff like that. This section, 13, responsive roadmap planning, my thought is, when it's time, is to simply get out chapter two and read this goal to plan developments so to maintain historic settlement pattern, compact village and urban centers, and do two things at once. One is to fill in the charts, and just start filling in the numbers here. And the other is to continue to review those goals, policies, and recommendations, and I think they still need some work. But I'm not sure what to do about it. We can just dump them on the, on the select door and say, here you go, you now have 857 recommendations, get busy. It's, it's a bit much. I mean, I've been looking at other town plans over the last two months, they range as much as 40 to 60 pages long. We're at 112, we don't have the maps in there. Just saying.
It just seems like busy work. At some point, everybody did the work, it's in the body of the text, and I don't understand why we have to do this.
I'm not sure we do, it was in the other one, but we have to do it, that's a validation.
That's what I'm asking.
In the interest of expediency here, if what is in there already is not incorrect or otherwise proven, so it is gonna take us a long time.
The biggest problem is we rearranged the, we did, we rearranged the goals, we've added goals, used to track goals, so land goal two-
Accuracy is important, but I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, in the tables, if they're not any accurate, if, if they-
That won't be a barrier to us approving the plan.
Right, just good to get on with it.
Yep.
And they were, the policies in that, that section, because I learned to hate it. It was accurate, uh, wouldn't, Eric, you asked me to do that, so what was it, like three months, four months ago? It wasn't that long ago that we- Because we made all these changes, so nothing really matched up, so we had to go back through and do that to make sure it was up to date.
You did?
Yeah, there might be a couple things off.
I didn't realize that you've done.
But it was more recent, because we were seeing the light at the end of the tunnel.
All right.
Who were charging him with?
I assumed it was 2012 or whatever that last-
No, no.
Okay, that's-
That was earlier, very recent, so that could carry over. I, I don't think it's required in state statutes. It seems kind of-
If it's not required, then why are we doing it?
Yeah, it's not like anybody's referencing it, you know, it's not a very fun thing to do, to look at that list and then go back and look.
It didn't look like fun.
No, it wasn't.
So response to roadmap planning goals?
You do have to show that you respond to the planning goals, what you may not have to do is, is in that format.
Well, you can do it narrative of a paragraph or two.
That's right, you could, you could be more economical.
I do know, but this is what, what the regional is gonna be looking at.
Yes.
Yeah, and to speak to what Eric just said, it's there, it's fairly accurate, let's just leave it in there.
So they can fill out a little checklist and say you missed, that's what they did for us last time, right? And we don't need to do any of this. So can we submit the draft to them as it is and ask for comments that we can review at one of the next two meetings?
If I understand her, she just asked, should I get permission to send this down to John Bennett again and have him give a second look over? He looked over the first one in May, I think, if I remember.
But now we've addressed a lot of his issues, so.
I, I believe, and I'm gonna put a caveat on this, I believe we've addressed them all. The one dealing with Grafton's neighbors was one of those late night, I'm sick and tired, let's write a crappy sentence and call it good things. You read it, you're like, really, Dave? And I think I desperately talked about it, I mean, it's too far.
No, that was a very good point, I, I, I stress it enough, I think it would be good to get them to have another look at it. It's very timely.
I don't know that in a motion, but I need like consensus, I, I don't want to do things without your consensus.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I will send a copy down and say-
What do we do with their comments?
We have every right to ignore them.
You go alone, you know they're gonna make comments.
So far, their comments have not been subjective, but more, this is what the law says, this is what we saw. They, they've not come in and say, oh, really, you want to do that? At least that's not the perception I'm getting.
No, the comments will be helpful, because the comments will make us produce a document that they can approve. Otherwise, there will be stuff that they won't approve, so, so the comments will be very helpful for us.
Should I also send them a copy of this map we approved?
Yes.
Yeah.
As part of it. I don't think we need to vote on that, I think we have consensus.
No, no, that sounds great.
I'm gonna-
Tell me this, present the map.
What's that?
Just as it is.
I'm gonna send it as it is, and they already know to refer to chapter two land use for the comparisons.
They want to make it prettier, they can make it prettier.
Well, and that would be maybe part of the discussion, it's like, this is what we got, but you said they need to help us out to make it a little more professional. We'd appreciate any help, and that might generate some more discussion.
So I think you deserve a round of applause, I certainly do.
I'm gonna make it clear, I've gone through this page one to page 112. I can do it again, and I use the analogy, it's, I do a lot of woodworking, it's like sanding. I've gone through it with 120 grit sandpaper, I can go to 180, 220, keep finding periods and commas and exclamation points. My big thing now is, is content wise, and, and, you know, I would love for you to come in next time, as I said, and Valerie, you say, I got eight problems, here are the pages. Rather than once, I'll turn to page one. That will take a couple of years to get through at that rate, so. You'll need some other things to jump out. I added a whole section on culture. Well, the chapter was history, cultural, and natural resources, and there was two sections in it, history and natural resources, so I said, well.
So we should read the culture part more.
I just said, you know, it's things like, we have a nice library, and we've got some museums, and we've got some things that are cultural, Grafton Band, et cetera, et cetera, I threw some stuff in there.
I'm pretty sure we did that once, but I don't remember.
Oh, the band's in there in multiple places.
I see you, you resolved one of my questions already, is introduction a chapter? Because originally you had land use as chapter one, and introduction was just the introduction. But now you have introduction as chapter one, and land use is chapter two, so that, yeah.
There was a glossary that grew to eight pages and it's gone now?
Yeah.
Because as it grew, and then I started working on some of the chapters, I found that integrating definitions flowed better, so the glossary is gone. Wonderful, wonderful job, I love. Anything else with town plan? Our next regular meeting, including two hearings, will be September 11th. Chuck, is there any homework we need to do for either hearing?
Matt, you have all the materials for the David Ackers thing, we'll update the road name, I'll submit something from Wyndham, but you basically have the source material. So I forwarded already a set of questions to the advocate in anticipation of the things we discussed, so there's really no homework.
All right.
So could, David?
Go ahead, yes.
Sorry, could, could we make the September 25th definitely the next special meeting, because it's right now-
I'm planning on it, I hope you're all planning on it.
Exclusively town plan.
You know what, if we approve final town plan on the September 11th meeting, we don't need the 25th meeting. Well, that's a little bit overwhelming, I know, but I'll throw it out. That's our motivation, we go back one meeting a month, once we get this approved, there's our motivation. Other items on the next meeting that you think I should have, obviously I'll put an agenda together and send it out, it's a regular meeting. One of the weird things is, we're gonna have three sets of minutes to be approved. Because we decided not to approve meetings and special meetings, so we got the last regular, the last special, this special, that's three sets we need to approve at the next meeting.
Now, and this, by the way, I'm just seeing here on the agenda, this was not a regular monthly meeting.
I changed it to special, I had to do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I screwed up on that, because I cut and based it from another agenda, yes, you're right. Any other business for the good of the commission?
We'll do quarterlies on the 25th.
Quarterlies, that'll be a special meeting. Should we do it in a regular meeting?
Do you want to do a regular?
I'm asking you.
Do you have enough time? I mean, it's just basic, I'm just gonna give you what-
I don't have an issue with doing-
And ask Chuck to please submit some hours, okay?
So Chuck, on the 25th, we're gonna have a recording report, so if you get that done before, so you can have updates. Anything else? Set the motion to adjourn? Lisa?
Second.
And we're adjourned, thank you very much folks for your-